Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. Al called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programs. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is B&amp;P Properties LLC London Honda requesting a special permit and site approval under Section 3.26.11 in 9.4.1 of the zoning bylaws for multiple business use on property located at 143 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 27 parcel 11.
Can't wait five minutes.
Oh, 7:05.
Anything that's been continued?
Oh, is there anybody here for development up on Hampton Street? I see up. And is there anybody here for the strategic behavioral solutions?
You can continue those now if you want.
Can I?
Yep.
Could I have a motion to continue the SEL Realty LLC Defender of Subdivision Plan for a 13 lot, single-family home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street in 19 even E Nav, map 12 parcel 120? It's been continued from 9:10 to tonight, and they've requested another continuance. Do I have a motion to continue?
October 8. Get an extra meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue until October 8.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote. We have another continuance, Strategic Behavioral Solutions, requesting a site plan approval for private educational use under Section 3.2.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws at 390 Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass., map 33 parcel 85. Bylaws at 390 Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass., map 33 parcel 85. Waiver request, 390 Southwood Street Strategic. Is this some of the same one, Adam?
Yeah.
Okay. Topography lighting site plan prepared by Official Engineered Landscape and Drainage. They're asking for a waiver for that. They've also requested a continuance?
Yes.
To October 8?
Yes.
Have a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote.
Give me minutes.
Okay, the minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
All those in favor?
I'll second it, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Can we do the decisions?
Yes, I've got three decisions written up for you, one for 111 Washington Street, one for 125 Oxit Street North, and one for 189 Washington Street. No, not really, not this time. I suppose I can play on the master plan. Committee is winding down its process for working on master plan. There's going to be a public meeting October 30th where the draft plan is going to be presented, as well as there's 203 goals that have been developed, so things will be presented at that date. 6:00 PM October 30th, next door to the board's slotman's room. Anyone's welcome. My column will be publicizing it next few weeks. That plan will be coming to this board for their review and approval sometime in November, hopefully. Okay, 7:05.
Let's try this again. First item on our agenda this evening is B&amp;P Properties LLC London Honda requesting a special permit and site plan approval under Section 3.26.11 in 9.4.1 of the zoning bylaws for multiple businesses use on property located at 143 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 27 parcel 11. I have a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make a motion open in public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please state your name.
Nelson Santos of Fletcher Tilton, here on behalf of B&amp;P Properties LLC. B&amp;P Properties had filed a special permit with the ZBA in order to use 141 Washington Street to add an additional tenant. They had filed that themselves. We were brought into the loop and were before this board tonight in order to get a waiver of the special permit, the site plan review at this point. Just to give you a little bit description of the property, the property is located at 141 Washington Street. It's a building which Honda Motors basically uses now for specialized sales of sports cars. What they want to do is use the existing footprint of the building, make some minor changes to basically putting a new entry door and putting 5,200 square feet for a handicap-accessible tenant company to come in and use that portion of the building. There'd be no other changes. They're really just trying to get the tenant in there. So that's why we're before the board tonight. The sole purpose we're before the ZBA is to get the approval to allow one additional tenant. The use of the premises is staying basically the same. Where it's going to be used by the tenant's name is Advanced Wheels LLC, who will be using it for the handicapped motor vehicles, similar as to what London was using it for.
So the existing building is 5,200 square feet?
Uh, yes, yes.
I couldn't say something. The request of special permit as ZBA was withdrawn because it was not a ZBA. We never thought we'd grant the special permits to the planning board that grants a special permit for multi-business use. There's a better confusion when the applications were filed, so it was last week that ZBA application was drawn before any actual stake, so they'll be requesting that special permit for this board tonight, as well as the site plan. If you need a site plan, you get a special permit.
Have any questions, Steve?
Stating no modifications to the building?
The modifications we're looking at are minor, the new entry door aesthetics to make it kind of separated, but no modification whatsoever.
Those plans, are we going to see those plans?
We're seeking a waiver on those plans at this point because we're not really changing the use of the building, we're just bringing another company in.
I have nothing else.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Special permit.
A special permit?
I'll make a motion to approve a special permit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote.
Thank you very much for talking.
Good luck.
Slap fire. Okay.
Technically, on the site plans, we require 11 by 17 minnow and a full sheet. Considering where this is an existing unit, everybody's provided, everybody knows it. I'm not going to press the issue, but...
We were under the gun to get it in here.
But in the future, if you come here again for either London Honda or anybody else, please make sure we have the plans at least Thursday before. Anybody have any comments on the site plan? Steve? Dick?
No known problems?
No.
I have a motion to approve the site plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for talking.
As a vote.
Thank you.
Okay. We gotta wait till 7:10.
Yeah.
I have a motion to close the public hearing for the special permit for London Honda.
Make that motion.
That's like I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. We gotta wait till 7:05. I mean, 7:10.
Yeah.
Something, something coming.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is tiny home and men's section 13 tiny homes of the Auburn zoning bylaw, adding new section 13.5.6.1 and 13.5.6.2. Motion open the hearing?
I'll make a motion open in public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have any questions? I don't think there's anybody in the audience that does anything to skirt.
I don't know. Anybody here from the audience of tiny home?
I'm sorry, you can project your voices just a little bit. We are having a bit of trouble hearing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Is there anyone here for the tiny home?
Usually I'm told just the opposite, I'm an Irish whisperer.
Thank you.
I'll just tell you all, you know, what brought this board on. The 2018 International Building Code, the residential code, the appendix Q as a part of, is referenced in the tiny home bylaw that was approved at town meeting this past May. The state is not adopting the 2018 building code to go into 2020. So because the 2018 building code is referenced in the tiny home bylaw, town council recommended that we present this to the town meeting to see if they were able to take action and adopt the appendix Q as part of the town bylaw. So this was a recommendation from town council to make this part of the bylaw.
Do you have any comments, Steve?
No comments.
No.
All right, I got a few. Now, on the bottom of the page, section AQ 102, definitions AQ 102.1 general, under egress roof access windows, skylight, or roof window designed and installed to satisfy an emergency escape and rescue opening requirements, in section R31 0.2. I want to know how you get off the roof. There's no ladder that's required once you through the skylight. Skip a paragraph, loft floor level located more than 30 inches above the main floor, over to the main floor and more, one or more sides with a ceiling height of less than 6 feet 8 inches and using as a living or sleeping space. I don't understand the 30 inches, unless that's just for storage. That's my personal opinion. On the next page, top of the page, habitable space in hallways and tiny homes shall have a ceiling height of now less than 6 foot 8 inches. Bathrooms and toilet kitchens shall have a ceiling height of now less than 6 foot 4. Well, doors not going to fit in a ceiling height of 6 foot 8 because the opening for a door is 6'11", so I don't know how that works. And I would need an explanation on AQ 104.2.1.1 on width. And then the tread depths, I have a problem with that. Tread depths usually aren't 20 inches, standard usually 9 to 11 inches. And on the riser height, that was our right, is 9 inches because it's usually 7 to 9 inches by building code, that I know of. Landing platforms, I need to see a diagram. Basically, the ship's ladders to go from the lower level to the loft only supports 200 pounds. And a lot of people in this room can't climb that ladder, included. That's got to be higher. So I'm hearing that out. You can have my comments if you want.
I can share them with the building commissioner against input. I will say, I thought it was cut and paste from the national book, so...
Right, good.
So...
Right.
For this board's action, we're looking for a vote either recommend approval by town meeting or not to recommend approval by town.
I would have to say recommend approval by, if the corrections are made, but not in its current state. And I think maybe we should have Wendy and Scott here as part of that vote.
Okay.
So I'd like to postpone that to the October 8th meeting.
Oh, yeah. That's fair.
I have a motion to postpone the decision on that to the October 8th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote. Next item on our agenda is Regional Mall Overlay District amending section 4.5.4 dimensional requirements of the Auburn zoning bylaws, Regional Mall Overlay District adding new sections 4.5.5.4, 4.5.5.5, and 4.5.5.6, and amendment to table uses section 3.2.
Open the public hearing.
Make a motion open.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote.
So, the intent of this proposal is to kind of be proactive and kind of ensure the mall remains a viable asset for the community. It's a major property right in the center of town. It's in everybody's interest to make sure that means a functioning property. This proposal will add two new uses, notably the medical office use, which is currently such a use and if they want to expand or allow medical, certainly want to go in, it would make this an allowable use. Also add trade or professional education for profit school allowable use, possible option for the mall. Are also some setback changes that are part of this proposal. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. Anyone in the audience?
Is there anyone? Just combine that again with the school, the trade school.
Sure. In your packet, you have a spreadsheet, the table of uses. Trade school is item number, there are 3.2.3.2. Trade professional or other school conducted as a gain for business. Just that change on the table of uses to add this, changes from a no to a special, a site plan approval. There are a couple other changes, they're all in red. There are a lot of N's that are added as this proposal, the spaces were blank in the bylaws, the N's kind of just clean up the table of use, so they're prohibited as a use. It also changes a couple uses from special permit to just site plan approval. Just one last step that they'd have to go through for approval. It's still to come before the board, just for a special, just a site plan instead of special permit.
What does the SPA stand for?
Site plan approval.
Okay.
I do have one question, Adam. Just out of curiosity, is there a number of specific type of businesses that it caps for medical services?
No.
Okay.
So we have to make a vote on this, whether it'll recommend it to?
Yeah. Recommend approval and not recommend approval. So I don't know if anybody in the audience is here to comment on this particular proposal in the mall. No.
This is another one I think I'd like to wait for Wendy and Scott to be in on.
I'd have to agree.
Anybody have a problem with postponing this to the October 8th meeting?
No.
Can I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to postpone it till the October 8th meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote. Next on the agenda is the 720 zoning map, zoning map amending and extending industrial park district in the Sword Street, Southwood Street area. Say a motion open the hearing.
Make a vote.
Good.
Make a motion open the hearing?
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
As a vote.
So, this particular proposal, looking to kind of rectify the boundary lines in the Sword Street area. There are several properties in that.
So, can you speak up louder?
There are several properties that are split zone. For example, this particular property is half in the residential, half in the industrial park. Proposal to make the entire parcel part of the industrial park. We also extend the industrial park zoning district west on Sword Street to Southwood Street and north, just on the west side of Southwood Street to the Worcester line.
Right.
A lot of these uses are already kind of industrial uses. There's a small neighborhood up here, currently that's zone general industry, so it's already in an industry zone. They would just go from an existing market forming to an existing market forming, there really wouldn't be any particular change. One of the reasons that this was proposed was changing it to industrial park will allow multiple businesses to occupy the same structure. It's currently not allowed. A lot of businesses are kind of going to this where they're sharing buildings, startups are sharing buildings to save costs, to share the space, to collaborate, to have a great business been going the past few years. So again, it's to kind of clean up the zoning map. Six or eight parcels are split between two different zones. Some, it's only a very small sliver on the front edge. Some over here, you can see it's kind of an obvious piece of residential, part industrial. Anyone has a question, happy to entertain, not public.
That gray area right there, Adam, to the top right, yep, that is, where is that zone right now?
This is industrial park.
Right, and the gray?
And this is residential.
Is it just straight residential in the gray, or is it?
This part, yes.
Or it's a combination?
This part over here is all general industry. These pieces here partially residential, residential A and industrial park.
On the top right that John just spoke of, is that whole, is the gray and the purple one parcel?
Yeah. The yellow, these yellow lines?
The gray part?
It's not very clear map, but these lines are all the parcel lines.
Right.
So that backs right up to, looks like houses right there around the corner of that gray area. So if we changed it to industrial, they could put this building back there now or not? I have no idea.
I think it's many parking ingrained for this building here.
It's one thing to have parking, it's another thing to have a three-story building in your backyard.
Can it, does it access by Rockaway Road?
Yeah. This property, it's a butter, but I don't believe it's any actual access.
Does it have frontage on Rockaway? Looks like it.
Right way to Dead End Street.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, right, right here. It's a very small sliver.
Yeah.
How big is it? And what's that frontage? Not enough?
It's 10 or 15 feet.
Oh, okay.
If you can see the, the Southwood Street or Sword Street, right?
It's Sword Street frontage.
Yeah.
Currently it's Kaden. We did notify all prop owners, as well as all butters. There were 73 of butters that we notified and 34 prop owners. They were all notified sometime last week, so they were aware of the changes. This was not a requirement, there's no legal requirement to notify prop owners or butters, but we thought it'd be kind of courteous thing to do to let them know what the proposal is.
Did you get any rebuttal or reaction?
Not really. Couple calls from residents up here just inquiring about what was going on. One specifically was looking to see if there was a development looking to go in, which there isn't anything.
That's on, that's all on the west side of Southwood Street?
Yeah, right, yes.
It's all business anyway.
They, I believe the prop owner here at 29, just asked what we were going to do. I explained to them that we're looking to just kind of crack the boundaries of the district to follow the parcels. I don't have anyone that was all that against the proposal.
Instead asking.
We're waiting for that asking.
So? Do I get to ask if anybody in the audience has a public comment?
Yes.
State your name.
My name is Mary Ann Wilson. I reside at 29 Rockaway Road. I've lived there since December 1st, 1986. So I've been a long time resident, I paid off my mortgage. You said clean up the zoning map. I copied it down word for word. Let me tell you what like my morning is at 29 Rockaway Road. At 7:30, I can hear the machines whirring up, and then I'll hear all day, incessant, sometimes until 11 o'clock. Permanently at night, there are white lights glaring into my house. I took the time because the map that you provided us with the key legend, the colors that are marked on here are 1/16 by 1/8 inch. I can't hardly coordinate that to the, to the, right there. I can't coordinate that to where it fits right in the map. So I went to an online website and I found out that, if I'm correct, that gray area that you showed on the upper right-hand side of the lower section, see the deep purple, that one? I believe that one is called parcel ID 005_112. Owner, Auburn Town Hall, address Rockaway Road, a use code of 9370, which I don't know what that means, but let me tell you how it will impact my life. It's already way intrusive in my life, way, way intrusive. Now, the little meager amount of woods that separate my house, where I go home every day after working hard, now it's no longer the meager woods separating. Part of it is going to be right in my face every single day. And that cleanup of a zoning map is a lot more to me, and it also means the town might be more interested in making money by converting these things permanently to a zone for business. But you know, I'm part of the person, especially when they started changing the tax so that the real estate taxes of people that own homes has gone up, while you have been lowering the taxes of businesses to go down. My taxes have gone up from 1,200 to like 4,000 a year.
Trying to call?
So I'm just trying to say that we should have a voice and to so violate and further intrude in our lives, deviating what we already knew was intrusive to the point where I'm staring at it in front of my face every single day, for somebody to make a little bit of money, find another place to put it. And I say this respectfully, but if you lived it every day 24/7, heard it, and saw the lights, and then the occasional boom, I don't know what it is, you wouldn't want it any closer to you than what it is to me and my family right now.
Anybody else?
Sharon Zalanka, I live at 5 Dyson Street. My home is divided, it's the little gray and purple area.
Yeah.
Yes. My home is divided between Worcester and Auburn, so I pay taxes to both. Both of my taxes bill state that it's a residential area. I've been there since 1984. I am the sixth generation to live in the house that was built by my great-grandparents. It is a residential area, it's not an industrial area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right in the part of the green jacket?
Dan Conde, 33 Guling Drive. Actually, that, those parcels on Everest Street and Seneca, you have three Seneca and 18 Tracy Place, which are, you don't even see Tracy Place or Seneca Street. I spent quite a bit of the weekend going in and around the neighborhood where this proposal is. That is an existing, established neighborhood. At the Selective's meeting last night, I did ask that we send a note to you folks, it did not pass, to remove those from consideration and ask that perhaps you look to zone them residential, which is what they are. There is not a drop of industry on Everest Street, Seneca Street, or Tracy Place in those areas. And just as a point of clarification on Rockaway Road, which is more a question through you, Ms. Chairman, to the planner, we were told last night that Rockaway Road was taken off the list and is... we were told last night that Rockaway Road was taken off the list and is not on the list that was handed out to us last night. So I don't know what providence that has. My understanding was Rockaway Road was not being considered for rezoning. So either I neglected to ask a further question or something isn't quite correct.
To the Chair, there was a parcel that was identified, I found it on Rockaway Road. That was this parcel right here, that's not being proposed. This particular parcel is frontage on Sword Street, so it's a Sword number 35 Sword Street, I believe, is that particular parcel. An earlier iteration of the map did identify this parcel as being supposed to change, that's not on this, on the current proposal.
That's what I'm saying. Anyone else? Gentleman in the white shirt first, please.
Yeah, I.
Please stand up and state your name, please.
I'm Mr. Don Packard. I own two pieces of property that are being, that are in this area on Everest Street. I came to see the planner last week and I asked him how it was going to affect me or my property and was told that it wouldn't. Well, if I'm right, we're residential now. If you change that to industrial, my taxes go up $5 per thousand. That's quite a bit of money.
Through the Chair, I spoke with the assessor. It's taxed on the use, not how it's zoned. So the use is residential, will remain taxed as residential and will not be taxed as commercial.
Okay, so no, it's, the change is more or less just to make the area all match what's next to it? It doesn't have any effect on taxes and stuff like that?
Correct. Correct.
The other, the other question I had, or the other thing that I had, is right now, does this, does this particular proposal, is this going to affect Pola in any way? I mean, they are, they already in industrial, aren't they in that area?
Through the Chair, they're currently in a general industry area. This would change how they're zoned to industrial park. It wouldn't impact them unless they decide to change something, then they'd have to follow the new zoning district.
Okay.
There'd be no direct, no current impact to them.
And it would not have an impact on access to the property? Because that Tracy Place was, was, they tried to get Tracy Place to allow the big trucks to go through. I mean, it's a very narrow street to start with and it was fought and it was defeated. They weren't allowed to do that. We're concerned that this change or this proposal could change things so that Pola could come back looking to do that again and perhaps have a better foot to stand on or whatever you want, however you want to put it. Is that a possibility?
Yeah.
Anything's possible.
Through the Chair, if they were to look, if Pola or any other businesses were looking to make a change, that is their plan, they would come before this board or possibly.
So they would have to propose it again, second time?
Correct.
And then the same people that fought it the first time could perhaps beat it again?
Correct.
Okay.
Next, anyone else?
Mine was just, really just a little addendum. I didn't even think of it till this evening. And it's not my main purpose at all in coming here. Could you imagine an industrial park encroached even further on your house? So suddenly your home loses half its value because nobody wants to be in your face with an industrial park right across from your house. A house that you've worked for for over 30 years, also somebody can make a little bit more money. I really think that planning can be put elsewhere if they look hard enough. It's really about maintaining what integrity there is to our neighborhood and keeping intact with that little sliver of woods so that we don't have to have it any more encroached than I like than it already is. It's a lot more than dollars and cents.
I understand how you feel, but I really don't think being that was the time to make a few more bucks. I really don't.
That might be so, but businesses want to and I just want our neighborhood, it's already compromised. Please don't compromise it any further.
Just one last thing, I did just want to point out on Everest Street, there is a five-ton restriction for, and I would point out, Rockaway Road is very narrow. Everest Street is very narrow, Seneca Street is very narrow, Tracy Street is narrow. These are residential neighborhoods. They're long established, they should not have to deal with, I've gone to every single building, these buildings are almost to the back of their property line, they're getting tremendous use out of their property. There's no hardship to the businesses, there is no rationale to make a change at this time. And I would ask that the board consider withdrawing this for consideration, taking some time and looking at it through the winter months and maybe coming back to the annual town meeting. Because I'm very concerned especially about those streets to the north and also Rockaway Road, which I thought was a settled issue, but now apparently is a continued issue. It's a dead-end streak. Barely one, one car length. No sidewalks on any of the streets over there.
Rockaway is not on our list.
No, they removed it, that's why I'm surprised that we have something here. I did ask about it, but anyways, thank you for your attention.
I'm on the station phone, I'm at 107 Voice. From what I understand, between all of my neighbors and I on this street when we purchased our homes, there's an easement area between us and supposedly there's protected wetlands behind us. There's a town drainage that goes down right behind, there's a creek. So where we are, I'm not exactly if it's cutting off any of my property, but I know there's easement areas between, you know, myself and all my neighbors. I just want to know how that's going to affect me if they correct, you know, the zoning or whatever and what can be done there because as we were explaining, it was protected land.
I don't think the rezoning goes as far as Voice Street.
Yeah, it's, it's behind Sword, it's, there's the.
Right over there. And you must be down right near Rockaway.
Yeah, if we may, it is, it's the, Brian, 111 Voice Street. It's to the bottom left corner of that purple map. That is owned by the town of Auburn and it's in that with the current industrial park and up behind Voice Street. And I think it's Engwood. That is owned by the town. And that, we didn't realize it's actually zoned as industrial until we received all this information. Because from what we were understanding, that it was conservation land by the town and that's what was deemed to us when we purchased our properties. And it may have been industrial all this time and it doesn't appear to be part of the proposed change, but I'm just not understanding why we're in that, from what we understand was designated as conservation land by the town of Auburn would be listed under industrial.
Through the Chair, that there would be no effect on how it's designated, conservation. The zoning map is just, just that, the zoning map, there's no plan for the town to get rid of the conservation.
So if it is conservation land, it is conservation land regardless of how it's zoned?
Correct.
No, thank you, that was the question I made. So there would be no building there?
No.
Thank you.
So I, just one more thing, about the easement areas, because I'm in the zone where they are. Are they gonna send us something saying that they're, you know, because right now it's just the easement. Is there gonna be a hard line of where the property line ends?
I'm not sure with the easements in that area.
Yeah, Maya?
Yeah, I have it right here.
There's a stream that runs behind, it's like more like a runoff stream.
Yeah.
That goes behind our houses and we own property on obviously both sides of it and it's showing that it is common property. And I think that's because at one time, even previous to us purchasing there, they had to go through and dig it out so it wouldn't flood.
Because it is drainage.
And I don't know what your question was on that.
Yeah, well, because you said that you're gonna clean up the lines where it is industrial and residential. I don't know if that's going to, you know, where we are, where it is claimed to easement. Town line.
I don't see it.
I don't believe it would impact that, the easements are, be illegal situation, the zoning district would not have any impact on how it's, how it easements, sub-legalizing.
So, Adam, just to reiterate, the areas in question are the gray areas, correct?
Correct.
So everything below that, from Sword Street down to the bottom of the page is existing?
Correct.
None of that's changing?
This is still industrial park and this is all zoned residential. This is all zoned residential. This is all currently industrial park, this is general industry, so.
I see.
This will all remain industrial on right now.
Are here, part of this, and this.
There's also a sliver right along here. Paul?
Which side of the street?
At the top of the map. Yes. Johnny, at the top of the map, because we're cleaning up the other.
I'm just worried about this lower section right now.
Okay.
Can you move the map? Can I see outside?
Clayton's right up the street there.
I know where Everest Street is. So there's an area up there as well that's looking to change?
That, this piece, Kaden, is the big section there.
Yeah, that's that big gray area there.
Over on.
Talking about the one that Steve just brought up, to the right of 290.
If you go to the west.
Slide the map down.
This is town on property.
To show Everest Street.
Yep.
So none of that area in there is in question, correct? Have you rezoned?
That, that is currently zoned general industry, not zoned industrial, not zoned residential.
So there's no proposal to change that?
Right now it's, it was changed to industrial park.
Straight industrial instead of the other one?
General industry.
General industry.
Where's Tracy Place?
So the top of the map is not residential, there's no residential up there.
I think you're wrong.
Right here.
Yeah, right up in there. And that's, some of it's on the Worcester side and some of it's on Auburn.
Through the Chair, just, actually, it's more or less Adam, but leaving it alone as general industry, right? What does it prevent any of those parcels from doing? That they don't, can't already do?
Doesn't prevent doing anything. The only, the only real change, changing it to industrial park would allow the multiple use.
Multiple tenants.
Multiple tenants. It would not allow any longer scrapyard, it would not allow motor vehicle repair. One other item it would not allow.
As it is currently.
As it is currently.
And any change of use still has to come back?
Correct.
But if you have multiple tenants with the same use, they will come back, right?
Correct.
Multiple tenants, I think.
I understand there.
I'm just, I just want a clarification of this.
You know, there could be something that moves in that while it's existing, it makes a lot of noise, you know?
I think that's my thing, I just don't, I want to be clear as to like if there was several of the businesses in the area, which would be unintentionally, couldn't do something as they currently are constructed, then I could see it. But if it's just to kind of clean up. That's what I'm getting at, so I'm getting it. Okay.
This is another one, I'd like to have some more input between Scott and Wendy as well. But can we pick and choose areas to make it all industrial and leave the other areas alone?
I think at this point, it's kind of too late to be making changes like that.
So it's either yes or no?
So no.
And when do you have, when does this have to go in?
There's the, I believe the warrant is being printed Monday.
So do we have time to wait for Wendy?
No.
We don't have time?
We don't have time.
No.
So you're looking for us, whether or not we approve making those changes?
Support, emotional support.
Support or not support?
Or not support.
Well, one more question.
Until next time, it's time to, just to change the map entirely.
We can say that at the next meeting, but we have to vote one way or the other on this right now. If we're gonna make a vote.
Yeah, I mean, well, no.
But we can revisit.
You can wait until next time to make a recommendation. At this point, I believe it's too late to make changes to the map just because the timeline is, is.
Right.
Too late to do that.
Correct.
We'd have to, I think we'd have to schedule a whole new public hearing if they're gonna be changing all that. It's really too late for that.
Yeah, if it's denied, then they'll come back anyways if somebody wants to.
Right.
And then Wendy and Scott can have a chance. We think it's.
We still have a more public comment.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm Nathan Skylark, I live on Everest Street. I keep hearing from the gentleman in blue that this isn't gonna have any change to our neighborhood. So the question that I would have is, what's the point of changing it if it's not gonna change the use of any of this? If there was no impact on our neighborhood, then we wouldn't be changing what it is. If you want to clean up the districting map, you should be making our neighborhood into residential. You shouldn't be making it into industrial park. And I know that that's, it's too late to do that with this map. So I ask that you please vote this down until a plan comes to you that makes our neighborhood residential. Because it's residential and I don't want big trucks driving down my road. And I don't want another Polar plane to show up in my backyard. Thank you.
If I could just approach the map, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Because I've heard discussion and I just want you to be aware of what I'm talking about. Pola stops here. This is Everest Street. If you allow this to be rezoned and somebody comes in, they will take all of this residential, existing residential to Dyton Street, several hundred feet into an existing established neighborhood. Now whether it's Worcester, it's Auburn, it doesn't matter. It's pushing a district that shouldn't be into a residential, established residential neighborhood.
I don't understand what you meant by they're gonna take it.
What I'm saying is, if this became industrial park and somebody decided to purchase this, the people who live on this side, Dyton Street is the dividing line. These are four or five homes currently, there's many more homes up here. You're pushing the industrial park district into a residential neighborhood even further. This is a residential neighborhood, it has no business being zoned industry. This has no business being zoned industry. If you even go over there, I've walked these streets many times. They're very narrow, these roads are very narrow. Seneca Street is very narrow. Tracy Street does have residential in the upper portion, I drove it, I wouldn't recommend it, but if you want to, you can. And Seneca Street here, Tracy Place is over here. And again, that's all residential. My understanding is partly GI, but I really think that this, I would appreciate any consideration if you tabled this to even the town meeting for other considerations. Thank you.
I just, sorry, just one more quick question. Are you saying Tracy Place right here, I know it's split right at the Worcester Auburn line? My sister actually lives on that street, I know she's had battle back and forth. So is the zoning going to affect the Worcester line as well? Or is it gonna just stay in Auburn?
We can only break away what's in the town of Auburn.
Okay, I didn't know if it's in the town of Auburn.
And one point to the woman in the back, I just want to make this one point, used to the town's trying to grab more money? Actually, if they changed to industrial, they'd grab less money.
They, they grab less money because I know the tax.
It's gonna wind up even sooner or later, so we can keep.
If there are more land that they can put buildings on and get more businesses, then those more businesses will generate tax money.
Well, they're only gonna generate tax money on the revenue from the property, not, not to the town for what they do. They pay the federal government for that and state, not the town. So that argument doesn't hold water, but I do understand where you're coming from as far as noise. Possibility of building a, a building in that big gray area right behind your house? Believe me, I understand.
I appreciate that because it would be a third compromise. One is sound, one is nightlights, and then it'll be third, in your face visually, all day seeing it and none of anybody in my neighborhood bought into that residential neighborhood to see that.
Have you approached the company about doing something with the lighting?
I don't even, you want to know how nervous I get about this? I don't even want to get on their property to see which company it is. I think it's the one that's the former Thermal Electron, if you get the name right now. But they have some big bright white lights and no, I don't approach people and companies because I just generally don't think I'm going to be heard. But I figured in a town meeting format, I could at least be heard because I really don't want my light approached anymore. And I can guarantee nobody else in this room, if they were in my. And I can guarantee nobody else in this room, if they were in my home, living there, would want to see an industrial park put right in their face.
It's already in your face, I'm just, we're just trying to keep up, I'm expanding further.
I have a strip of woods, there's a strip of woods in between me and the industrial park. I don't really see it except for at night with the lights coming, but the noise is very much present. So now I'll have not just at nighttime the lights, but in the daytime, seeing that industry being built upon the land. And it's going to totally change the feel of my little tiny, narrow, dead-end road. And it's just got to be a better place for it, because I'm just saying, I'm sure I'm not the only one who feels like this. There's a lot of residents that live around me that are elderly and they can't get out. I'm just saying. And I appreciate what you're saying, how you feel, but I can't hear, because I'm in this area as well. And I heard things about warrants and, and I could be wrong, because I can't hear that well. It's either all or nothing, and I don't know what that was all about, because I can't hear.
It's on the agenda, may speak you, Adam, to do something with it next week. That's if we say, we recommend accepting it. So we haven't got to that portion yet.
Okay.
But if you don't want to approach people or approach the company, it's easy to look up online who they are, send them a letter. They maybe want to help you out as far as the lighting. I mean, just a suggestion.
I, I think it's the company it is, I don't even want it to step on the property.
You don't have to, you send them a letter or an email. I'm sure they have a contact online. You may get some results, they may call you and say, hey, we didn't realize, you never know. All they can do is, all they can do is say no.
It's worth the thought.
Yep.
But if, if that's, at this point, when the lights used to bother me, that's nothing compared to seeing buildings right in my face, which was once some woods that made that little buffer between my family and the industrial park. It's, it's so stark.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
Are we ready for a motion?
Do you guys have anything to say?
Nothing remaining.
I'm going to ask for a motion to deny.
I'll make that motion to deny.
Not recommended approval?
No, recommended.
Not recommended.
Okay.
Make a motion to not recommend approval?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's not recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Old tale over there.
Just the telephone. Mr. Chairman, the planning board is the, is the sponsor of the article, and I'm not going to tell you how to.
I'm going to tell you right now, the planning board is not the sponsor of the article.
It is.
Well, I have never written anything sponsoring anything, none of these gentlemen here have written anything sponsoring anything. I think that's a little out of line.
No, I'm saying you are the sponsor, what I was mentioning before is if.
No, we are the party to, to approve or not approve, or recommend or not recommend to the town to have the zoning bylaws changed. The zoning board has also been on this. I'm not going to argue with, the hearing's closed.
I'm not seeking to, to argue with you, Mr. Chairman. You are listed as the sponsor, what I was going to ask you to do.
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to table the article from the warrant. You are listed as the sponsor. I've been told the board is the sponsor, so you could make a further vote.
It's just been recommended to deny, to go on the warrant.
I'm misunderstanding, Mr. Chairman.
How much more can I do?
Thank you.
Moving on. Applicant Chester P. Town Hall's requesting site plan approval, requesting site plan. Move on to sections 3.2, 3.8 of zoning bylaws for private lodge or pub on a properly located 88 Bancroft Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 34, parcel 11. Please state your name.
John Reel, J.R. Associates. Sign up for the project.
William McLean, treasurer, Chester Town Hall.
HST Group is listed on the plan.
That's correct. They are, they are on the agenda tonight.
So.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion to open the hearing?
I'll second it, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please continue, my mistake.
So we, we're still actually in the process of just wrapping up our final details that we need to, for the submittal of the plan. We tried to put in what we could at this point, just so we could get the ball on here. Because obviously, they had a fire there and we need to rebuild as soon as possible, so we wanted to get in on the agenda as soon as possible. But we are still working on the final details and we'll be submitting a revised plan with everything that has been asked upon us as far as what they want on the plan. So, we are still in process. We have an actual floor plan of the building that we're going to be setting forth here. And we should have everything complete within the beginning of next week, as far as the site plan is concerned.
We can't accept looking at any plans tonight, they have to be in the Thursday the week before, not being last Thursday, the week prior.
Yep.
So we have time to put it together and all of us take a look at it.
Okay.
Secondly, what was submitted to us is very insufficient. It's just a shaded area where you want to put the proposed building as compared to the old building.
Yep.
We can't make any decision or recommendation on any of that, unfortunately. I, I know where you're coming from, I know you want to rebuild, everybody wants to see you rebuild, but we, we have nothing in front of us that we can discuss or approve.
And when is the, we would get in for the following meeting, when, I forgot, in two weeks or?
October, in two weeks.
October. Okay.
All right, well, we need anything submitted the Thursday before, so that would be October 4th. I want to say it's that Thursday.
We need it in by October 4th.
By noon on that day.
That's fine. Okay.
But you can go on and make a presentation if you like, so we all have a, I mean, you took the time to come here, so.
We're planning at this point, we'll, we'll continue on, we'll get all our, our remaining information that we, to get on the plan and.
HST should know what's required, what's needed for the town.
Right, they, they will be with us once they finish everything here. They'll be at the next meeting.
Very good.
All right.
Make a motion to continue to the next meeting?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
Very good. Thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight is F. 711 Southwood Street Domino's requesting a site plan approval under section 3.2, 5.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for restaurant use. Domino's Pizza property located at 711 Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 61, parcel 37, continued from September 10. Please state your name.
My name is William Mohan. I'm representing SNL Pizza, Inc. And I have with me tonight Sarah Andre, who's the president of SNL Pizza and will be the owner of the franchise. When we appealed before you last time, it was tabled only because the sewer commission hadn't reached a decision. They had made a decision, we appealed that decision and they said, when they got the information that they didn't have before, we were able to show that their, their information was, was incorrect. They offered to give us another, another hearing. We did go before them, we presented the material. They voted three to nothing with one abstention to give us the waiver. And the external grease trap is certainly not warranted, needed in this particular case. So we are coming before you tonight for your approval. And move on, we have been granted a demolition permit. And that will start on, on Thursday, changing it. And I think, nobody likes to see empty stores in the mall. And, and it's something that I think we can, we can do. We have been, we call the park and wreck because community, or community service is, is important to us. Some of the people who were here last time were from Domino's National, and they always tried to project that as well. We called Mr. Ken Fairbanks of the Auburn, I, I don't know.
DVW.
DVW, okay. Asking if there was a, to suggest a project that we could get involved with as a community service project. And he recommended to us the Veterans Memorial at the Conner Waters and Route 12. And, and so we sent a crew down there, including myself, including Sarah, and, including the gentleman from Michigan, from Domino's, to weed and pick up all the trash and rake the leaves and really make it presentable. And we've asked them that, to consider it, if we are successful and we're in, in town. We'd like to do that on an annual basis, maybe like the week before Veterans Day, go down, clean it up and get it all set in case there's going to be some kind of service at the park. We'd like to make sure it, it really looks nice. And, so we were happy to do that, but you can expect that kind of community service from Domino's if we're in town. So we're asking for your support again. And we'd like to move, get that started.
That's, there's names on there. What, were they marked right on that map of the packing shop?
Yeah, right on the end.
Yeah, we're on the, we're on the, no, we're on the other side.
Jasmine is where.
We're on the other side.
With TJ Maxx, and TJ Maxx is Jet.
Jordan's over here, TJ Maxx is here, this is the old Cosmo Pro, over here products. That's the, right here is, um.
No, we're on the, we're on.
You go right next to AAA, right?
Yes, we're right next to AAA.
On the left, if you're looking at that.
That's right.
Those names, no.
No, they're not.
No, TJ Maxx is right to the other. It's a general idea who's there.
Right. Exactly.
Any questions, Steve?
So the waiver was granted on conditions, and you guys have no objections to the conditions?
We have no, no objections, they agreed that what we have, the menu we have, and what we currently bake there does not produce anywhere near the grease that's, that's necessary to warrant a thousand gallon external grease trap. That our internal grease trap can, can more than handle that.
And when the menu's changed, they'll notify?
They're not changing. They're not changing. Believe me, they are not changing.
They only have to notify if they change the menu that creates grease. Change the menu, but.
Just wanted to make sure they were in agreement with that.
Most of it.
Most of it.
Could I have a motion to approve the applicant with these three stipulations in the, in the approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a vote.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to Auburn.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to be here. That gentleman is looking for a job that says work.
He's a lawyer, you don't want him.
Thank you again, have a good night.
Next on the agenda is SZLL Realty LLC.
Already continued.
Already did it?
Yeah, we continued the next two.
Oh, that's right, already did. Applicant Massad Family LLC requesting modifications of site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. Continued from September 10.
Hi, my name's Mike Scott, I'm an engineer at WDA. I was here a month ago or so, and since that time, we provided the town with three plans relative to the completion of the Faith Ave realignment project that Mr. Massad began about a year plus ago. The, the plans demonstrate the work was, has been completed in compliance with the approval. I did send out a memo originally noting a handful of things that were either deficient or incomplete. There's, the deficiencies, if you want to call them that, or as I call them, were really related to a stormwater basin that's off from the, off the roadway and it is for the town's benefit. But we demonstrated that it's of sufficient size to be acceptable and function as intended. And then, there was a utility pole to be relocated that's still sitting on the side, or standing on the side of the road. I understand that your town engineer went out last week and came up with a short list of items as well. So what I'm here to request is that the board, if you recall, this is to be once accepted by the town, or once recommended for acceptance by you folks, the Board of Select will act in place of town meeting. What I'm looking for is just to see if the board is at the point where they can say to the Board of Selectmen, can you move this forward on their end? They still need a bond to cover any of the remaining items, utility pole, cleaning of catch basins, which I understand is scheduled for next week, and some other minor work. But in order for them to act, they would receive the bond, they would also receive executed easements between the town and Mr. Massad relative to drain engine, as well as Mastod. That's not necessarily related to the town, but Mastod's also got some easements. So what we're looking for is for acknowledgement from this board that there's no remaining items that, you know, prevent you from recommending that the Selectmen take up their piece of the puzzle again, contingent upon receipt of a bond and contingent upon receipt of executed easements.
Well, I would like to see that all of it is done beforehand. And when it is, then we can recommend.
So, when I was here a month ago, there was discussion about, and I guess I also had a discussion with both Adam and Mr. Coyle about whether they felt the bond was appropriate, and I know they're not the board, but that was the discussion we had. It seemed appropriate for the few items that were remaining. I did have a conversation with Mr. Massad and his electrician today, they are, his electrician, Jeru Electric of Northborough, better connections with the power company than myself or the attorney. They're in, they're arranging to have the pole relocated, so that's now in, being scheduled by N Grid.
So you're, just so I understand, you're saying that in lieu of not being done yet, you had posted the bond?
You would bond that work.
I'm not in favor of that at all. That means litigation, we go through it on a lot of other projects now.
Provided the work is completed.
If it was just the pole?
Yep.
We could go forward, because everybody's at the mercy of the utility companies. I've actually paved around utility poles with a year notice to them, so.
Yeah.
I feel your pain, but the other stuff here on the list, I tend to agree with Ron that it really needs to be done. It's not only that, but you have some corrections and easements to do that I, I got done reviewing, that I would like to see changed before we recommend all this. And I don't know if, if the water district has confirmed that all the water disconnections have been disconnected, you know, properly. I have no idea, like, we just shut off the curb stuff, that's not the way to do it.
Right, so if I, if I may on those, there's a handful of items on, this is the five or six items.
There's a couple of safety items on here that's, that's key.
Weren't that flashing light supposed to be built with the site plan and approval? It's where you go down a new road and the building's on your right, right?
Yeah, when you do the crosswalk there, there's supposed to be.
That was part of, it's not the site plan.
Pole up on the crosswalk.
With those flashing lights.
Flashing lights, and then the Chevron boards were supposed to be up and.
Right, so if I, that's, that's sort of what I want to talk about there. On this list of one, two, three, four, five, six items, the, two items that, that pertain to the road are the second and the fif, and the fifth. Cleaning of the catch basins, standard understood, there's actually stormwater treatment units. And the fifth is the existing utility pole, which we talked about. The rest of these items, the signage related to the road, the flashing lights at the crosswalk, the paving of the road that shut off, and in particular, shut off the water, all related to that parking lot project. None of that work was depicted on the subdivision plans. And Mr. Massad had a different contractor working on that project. So, understanding that he didn't finish the work on that project, what I'm suggesting is it's not related to the roadway and.
With the minute you have a crosswalk and flashing lights for pedestrian, it brings in the roadway.
Well, I, and I'm not disagreeing, but it wasn't part of the.
It's a safety issue.
Couldn't, couldn't agree more, however, it's not part of the subdivision plan, so. I'm not suggesting he doesn't, he's not on the hook to do it. What I'm suggesting is it's, he's, he's already committed to it.
As Ron already stated, we take a bond and none of this gets done, now we wind up litigation. We wind up costing the town money going through the town council to get this straightened out. So, I'm leaning toward Ron.
Yeah, myself, Bill Coyle, I'm town manager, spoke with town council earlier today, just sort of all on the same page. Town council did recommend, I really, that the board holds off on recommending approval until those safety items. until those safety items, the Chevron arrow boards and the beacon lights are installed.
Well, the only thing that's kind of, there's something about paved 300 feet in front of, 24 to 30, your new parking lot right next to the faith church?
Yeah, that, we didn't have anything to do with that, but yes, that's.
Is that what they're talking about?
Yeah. That's my understanding, yes.
So the only thing, like you said, John, was the utility pool that.
If that was it, that's a whole different ballgame.
You're at the mercy of them.
Right.
So that could be, yeah, that would be a difference.
I don't have confirmation from the Auburn Water District that the services have been properly disconnected going to the lots without, you toured on the houses. The 300 feet, that's something Bill came up with, and I don't blame him for that. And then the rapid flashing pedestrian beacon, that was supposed to be part of the pedestrian safety when you cross the road you're talking about.
Because we changed that whole curve, and we, we did a bunch of different things in there.
Yeah, we did.
For the safety.
There's also separate Ward Conservation Commission certificate of compliance is.
Right, and that's at the point where Mr. Krabowski, the consultant, has reviewed the vegetation. He's going to file a certificate of compliance. He needs to review the asphalt for the areas and grades, but that'll get filed. So I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm obviously not super happy with it, but I guess that's why I'm sitting over here.
It's like we say sometimes, we're not opposed.
Yeah, no.
But we want to see them done.
Can you, can you get me a copy of those, the comments that you have? I obviously haven't.
Yeah, I can give them to you. I just gave these two.
Okay, perfect. I have that.
Not that, it's in my plan. Just, it's small stuff.
Yeah.
It's like on page one, I don't know if you have a set of plans.
I do.
So at the top of page one, you got the two drain manholes?
Yeah.
Rim and rim. No invert elevation. On all the other ones, you have rims and inverts. That should be consistent, should be rim and invert.
Yeah, the manhole that's off to the side, again, was not part, those, those manholes were not part of the roadway construction. Those were part of the parking lot, so we didn't pull those. And this one and this one.
You took a shot on it, so you see it located. You took an elevation.
Well, yeah, they were buried over, yeah, they were buried, and we had to hit them when they, when we could. And we didn't go out and get them, but.
Yep.
There's actually, there's actually three of them.
One up on the corner to the right, there's also one with no invert.
Right, and again, those were related to the roads, to the site plan, so we, we skipped over. But yeah, I know which two you're talking about. I have them.
Then on the next page, when you're looking at the profile?
Yeah.
You have no rims and inverts.
Right, those are all labeled on the sheet before, but I can add them.
It's on the upper, on the upper course. Generally, you have the station.
Yep.
But you don't have the line drawn through the manhole, which is customary with a rim and invert on the.
Right, we didn't, we didn't transfer that data down. You can easily do that.
It should be. But I can give this to you if you need it.
No, 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 I know what you're there for.
Just make doubly sure that all that stuff's in.
Sure. All right, so we'll get those corrections made on the two sheets, and then we submit them. And I'll have a conversation with Mr. Massad about everything getting done, the pole, understanding that that may linger.
See, the reason why we're like this, because we've been bitten before.
And I know.
Many times, so we have to, we have to be the same strictness with everybody.
The pole is, is almost like a separate item.
That's right, it is a separate item.
All right, so if I can keep that, then the other ones are relatively simple.
There's nothing here major. I mean, it could be a week.
Right.
And you can, you can reapproach us on the next, the next meeting.
The issue, the other issue that's going to take some time, I've already spoken to the, the water department, and I know their understanding is two, there were three houses